Third meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Walmsley.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand tonight for the invocation given by Scott McKinney, pastor of Cookeville First Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Pray with me. Father God, we're grateful for this day that you've given us, and Lord, what an awesome day it's been. And God, we just, we come before you tonight asking you, God, for heavenly wisdom as we look upon things that entertain, ideas that are important for this city and for the future. God, we recognize, we can't do anything that would bring you glory apart from your wisdom. So, Lord, we ask for that. And I thank you for our mayor and for his love for you and for the other members of this council that stand for you and for the town, the atmosphere that we have. God, what a blessing it is to be a part of such an awesome town. God, I do just ask for your guidance and your direction, for your safety for this town, for your protective hand. God, we're grateful for our law enforcement, what they mean to us. We thank you for those that service this community with emergency medical. And, God, we just thank you for all that they do and how they put their life out there for us. God, we pray for your protection upon them. Guide us, God, lead us as you would, and we pray that all that we do is in honor of you, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes or corrections?
There are no changes, Mayor.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Remove.
Now, in second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Under old business, five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on February 18th, 2016. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Motion of second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Six, consent agenda, consider awarding bid for uniforms with the Electric Department. Is there a motion for that?
Some move.
Second.
Motion of second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, under new business, seven A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-160201 rezoning a portion of 771 and 781 Blackwell Park from CI, Commercial Industrial Mixed Use, to LM Light Manufacturing. Mr. Mills?
And council members, the location of the property is being considered rezoning is depicted on the screen. This was requested by the property owner, J.D. Parks. Basically, this is a cleanup issue where this property was re-subdivided, and it would extend to the back and place the property under the same zoning, which would be LM. The proposed rezoning was approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Department.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open this up for a public hearing on this matter. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this matter? All right. We'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion now on this item.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion among the council or any questions? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven B, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-160202 amendment to the official street map. Mr. Mills?
And council members, amendments to the official street map are necessary due to the closure of portions of one street and the extension of another street. Of course, the purpose of the official street map protect those streets for which the city is responsible for maintenance and to reflect the official street names. The closure was Laurel Avenue and Brown Avenue was slightly extended. The proposed amendments have been approved by the Planning Commission and are recommended by the Planning Department.
Thank you. Once again, we'll open this portion of the meeting up for the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the matter of the street names? All right. No one here to speak on that. We'll close the public hearing portion. Is there a motion on this?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any discussion? Oh, yes, sir.
James, I think you addressed this in the work session, but did we hear from anybody in the neighborhood that had problems with this?
No. No, this is amending the official street map on the Laurel Avenue, which we had a public hearings on.
Yes, okay.
And then the addition of a street. But no, there were no comments on this.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven C, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-160203 closure and abandonment of East Second Street from Cherry Avenue to Poplar Avenue, and closure and abandonment of a portion of Poplar Avenue from Craighead Drive to the southern boundary line of 121 Poplar Avenue, tax map 53B-G-4.0, and closure and abandonment of an undeveloped right-of-way of Craighead Drive from Cherry Avenue to the railroad right-of-way, and declaring all the closures as surplus. Mr. Mills?
And council members, the general location of these three streets, here's the map depicting these streets. The portion of East Second Street requested foreclosure and abandonment extends approximately 353 feet from Cherry Avenue west to Poplar Avenue. It has a right-of-way width of approximately 50 feet. Based on these dimensions, it consists of approximately 17,650 square feet. There are four parcels contiguous with the right-of-way. Parcels three and four, Parcels three and 13 on tax map 53B group G are adjacent on the north side of the right-of-way, and Parcels four and 1201 are, the same map and group are adjacent on the southern side. The owners of the four parcels of each signed a petition requesting the right-of-way be closed. Parcel three is addressed at 130 Poplar Avenue, is owned by Matt Allen and David Qualls. Parcel four is also owned by Matt Allen and David Qualls. Parcel 1201, which is on 210 Cherry Avenue, is owned by Amy Johnson, and parcel 13 at 226 Cherry Avenue is owned by Lisa Luck. The portion of Poplar Avenue requested for closure and abandon extends approximately 395 feet from the southern right-of-way of the undeveloped Craighead Street to the southern property line of parcel four on tax map 53B group G. According to a submitted survey, the northern parcel of the alley has an approximate right-of-way of 20 feet in width. A few years ago, the council approved a closure of the eastern half of this right-of-way. It used to be 40 feet wide. 20 feet of it was closed and abandoned to the then-owner of the property, so 20 feet remains. The remainder of the parcel of the right-of-way has an approximate right-of-way width of 40 feet. The dimensions, based on the dimensions, there's approximately 12,120 feet of right-of-way available on this. The western side of this abuts the L&amp;N Railroad. All adjoining property owners have requested, in this case, it's Matt Allen and David Qualls. Then Craighead Drive is the third section that would be closed and abandoned in this ordinance. It extends about 356 feet from Cherry Avenue west to the railroad right-of-way. Based, the adjoining properties here are owned by Matt Allen and David Qualls, and to the north of this, it's owned by Burton Nelson. And again, all property owners have requested petition, submitted a petition for closure. The procedure for closure and abandonment of a right-of-way is specified in our municipal code. That includes getting a written request, a payment of a fee, submitting a survey, several other steps, and includes purchase of the property by the adjoining property owners at an amount established by the city. This, it also requires review by the applicable department heads or city departments. The Electric Department has requested that a utility easement, 15 feet in width, be retained in all three right-of-ways for any existing electric facilities. They've also indicated that an existing street light located within the closed and abandoned right-of-way would be removed. And the Gas Department has requested that utilities and 10 feet in width be retained in the right-of-way of Poplar Avenue for an existing gas service line. There are no public water or sewer lines located within the right-of-way proposed for closure. However, the Water Department indicates that there is a private sewer lateral that crosses East Second Street to serve parcel three. The Planning Commission has recommended that the closure and abandonment of the subject right-of-ways and declaration of surplus property for sale to the adjoining property owners be approved, subject to the retention of utility easements for existing electric and natural gas facilities as specified by the applicable departments, and the Planning Department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you. Again, at this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Would anyone like to speak to this matter? Nope. All right. We'll close the public hearing portion. Do we have a motion on this matter?
Some move.
Second.
Motion of second. Discussion among the council.
James, is this central business district, this area, or is it local commercial?
No, this is local commercial. CL local commercial.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
James, I talked to you a little bit the other day about this. This is an area that holds, this whole area that basically the boundaries of Tennessee Tech on the north, Spring Street on the south, Willow on the west, and of course, Washington on the east. I kind of consider that area kind of the eclectic, kind of the gulch of, for lack of a better word, the gulch of Cookeville. I think it could be, I foresee that. So I have a great interest in this because all the, because the density of things that people want and like about Cookeville are all located within that area, in that very, in this very small area. So I guess my question is, is that, you know, of course, the neighbors all signed the petition that they would like these streets, these streets closed. They're not even, some of these aren't even developed. I guess my question is, and my question to you and to, and I guess, Jim, to you, because as you said on the Planning Commission, was the impact of the total area considered in recommending these closures, or was that a consideration?
Yes.
Because there are some, there are some, I could see the north-south avenue, a north-south avenue basically being closed that would allow, you know, contiguousness between downtown and Tennessee Tech. There is some value, there is some value to that, and there is some, offers the opportunity for development because of that. So, I'm just curious, and Jimmy, if you could address that. You already started to.
This area, I'd better, I would more describe it as a core more than a gulch, but a little more positive wording. But, yeah, we're very, yes, we're very protective of what's there already. So, we're very cautious when we, when we do something like this to make sure if something is changed or brought in, that it blends in with what's there, and we don't disrupt the property owners or the neighborhood in any significant way.
I was, I was thinking more, Jim, and thank, I appreciate that comment, but maybe you could, you and James can comment on this. I was thinking more of the potential, the potential that this, this area has, not so much trying to protect what they're, because there's really not, you're right, there's not a whole lot there right now. There has been apartment complex, et cetera. But what the potential for, you know, what, what we've got planned in our 2030 plan, of course, we have fraternity row that's coming down there. Tennessee Tech continues to grow. I just wonder if the closure of that, of these streets would
Will the traffic?
hinder the potential for this area.
Well, the traffic on the street is what, in the 40s, as far as number of cars daily?
Yeah.
Overall, for a week, it averages between 50 and 70 cars a day. We would think, or our thought process was, Councilman Epps, was this would actually promote redevelopment. You've been through this area.
Yeah.
It's slightly depressed. You can see on the map here that Cherry Avenue does have a part, a part of it is within a historic district, and several property owners there, especially those in the district, have invested quite a bit of money in refurbishing and bringing their structures up to code and basically doing a lot of property improvements. One thing that this would help do is, there is a slight bit of commercial traffic that will actually go through this and come down. This would prohibit that. And I didn't mention this, but the property owner to the south here, who's not directly, the street would remain open in front of his property, but he didn't indicate that he went to the north and turned around on the Qualls property. They have worked out, or took his trucks and went through the historic district, that have an agreement between the Qualls and Matt Allen property with this property owner to provide a turnaround for him, so he won't have to go through this historic district anymore. So, from that perspective, it's a benefit to that area. It would cut down the commercial traffic in a heavy residential area, and also an area that we want to see and promote redevelopment.
Okay, fine.
And that's what we hope will happen from this, and that's the intent here.
Good. Thank you both, Jim and James, for your comments.
James, in your opening remarks, you, you said that this was recommended subject to, and the last phrase, your last sentence was subject to. Run that subject to by me again to make sure I go through.
Subject to the retention of particular utility easements. One is for a, for the electric lines, 15 feet, that'd be seven and a half feet on either side of any existing electric facilities, and then 10 feet, five feet on either side of an existing gas line in Poplar. Those were the conditions for approval. And those, that's common where we have utilities in right-of-ways where they've been closed. The last alley that we closed off of six, the lower half of it, had a power line easement in it, or a power line located in it. We retained an easement when we closed that alley.
So that's consistent with what we've done in the past?
Yes.
Is there, going north off Poplar, does that, is there an undeveloped right-of-way that extends beyond that up to four that's not depicted?
There may be. There's some question is what is railroad right-of-way and what is Poplar Avenue. By tax map, it shows all as railroad right-of-way. This, what's depicted on the screen here, was done by a licensed surveyor based on deeds, and he indicated that there was a right-of-way there for Poplar. When we first got this request, when we looked at our tax map, we felt like that maybe a portion of this was actually in the railroad right-of-way. But as you can see on that map, north of Craighead, it shows no difference between, or it shows no distinction. It only has railroad right-of-way.
Right.
So unless and until a survey is done, I can't give you a definitive answer. There may be.
So, so based on that, technically, the closing of this, these three right here surrounds the property that's going to be developed, so it really ultimately doesn't harm or hurt anything because the person that's going to develop this property borders this entirely?
Well, that and the two properties on Cherry.
Right. Certainly, Poplar, it doesn't affect.
No, no, excuse me, just Poplar. That's right. I'm sorry.
Very good. And the property owners on Cherry, they don't have the through traffic anymore? Correct. They don't have the through traffic.
Yeah, I mean, they're, that's true. Again, the only property that we were, that we had some concerns about was the property on the corner of First. It's just south of the Qualls track, which is this piece right in here.
Yes.
Again, he indicated his truck traffic. It's a, it's basically a distributor for paint supplies, automotive paint supplies, and he has periodic large trucks that come in there, and they came and turned around in this, on private property here. Just, he's just done that traditionally. And this would allow, they've agreed to provide, this will be removed, and they'll actually provide a turnaround here, and that way the trucks will not have to drive through our historic district.
Very good. Any other comments?
Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, consider approval, adoption of revised covenants for the Highlands Business Park. Melinda Kiefer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have before you tonight a revised version of the covenants for the Highlands Business Park. We have revised them in order to bring them into closer alignment with existing city municipal code. In 2012, the council approved a document for the covenants in a hope that they would also be approved by the county. We were unable to come to a good agreement on that. So we've been working on this for the last four years, if you will, to be able to put together something that works well for our potential tenants in the business park, for the city and for the county. The main points of revision, number one, it aligns the park sign regulations with existing codes and establishes a corridor along I-40 for billboard signage, requiring the signage to be oriented towards I-40. We also have referred our design standards that were in the covenants to the architectural design standards already in place with the city of Cookeville, and it also refers the noise standards that we initially had in there to our existing anti-noise regulations for the city of Cookeville. Be happy to answer any questions, and I request your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
So basically, these revisions, why they're just, as they're, as they're written and stated here, is just to bring this part of this agreement into consistency or alignment with, with the rest of the code?
Yes, sir. I think we felt like initially, there might have been a little cumbersome in some areas, and we have really good zoning code and regulations with the city of Cookeville. So we really just did some housekeeping to clean that up, dealt with some stormwater issues, a couple of step-back issues, again, just to bring them in line with what the rest of the city follows, and I think it's a very good fit.
Any further questions? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven E, consider approval to purchase bulk de-icing salt on the statewide contract. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, if you recall, in January, you approved buying 200 tons of salt at the statewide contract price of $92.40. I would like to buy another 175 tons at the same price, and that'll pretty much complete our line item and our budget for that. We had $35,000 in that, and that'll bring us up to that amount. I would request your approval.
Very good. Is our motion?
Some move.
Motion of second. Any discussion? I think it's nice to note that during that last ice storm, we, I think you told me we spread 1.2 million pounds of salt over that three-day period and got all the streets clear, so we're happy to have.
We've used about 800 tons this winter.
Well, 1.6 million total, yeah. That's awesome. Okay. All right. All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering contract amendment number one to the Victor project water sewer improvements. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm here seeking authorization for the city manager to approve an engineering contract number one to the Victor project. That project was, I'm going to flip it over to a map, but that project was originally to design a sewer line down from the Academy Sports down to a pump station, and then to get that sewer pumped over to the existing sewer line in the Highlands Business Park. During that contract negotiation and the dealings with Academy Sports, we didn't have to lay this line or design this line. Academy brought the line to the pump station, so we had the designer design the future gravity line down to the Highlands Business Park. So now we are at the point of, that, that is going to be in the interchange project. We did not have any inspection services, onsite services in this contract. So, the original contract, and I'm going to flip you back to that, original contract was for $88,800. We're wanting to add $32,000 at its hourly rate, and that's just the not exceed price for a resident inspection to be there with the contractor that's a part of the TDOT to comply with all their regulations and all their requirements. And if anything happens, they can make changes onsite and keep moving. So we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. All right. So, do we have a motion? Not on this one. Yeah. Motion of second.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven G, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a water line agreement Ridgedale Drive with the Nashville and Eastern Railroad. Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Mayor and council, I'm seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into a water line agreement with the Nashville Eastern Railroad. We're, we're planning to replace an existing six-inch line here at the Ridgedale realignment project and put a 10-inch water line in there. And we, railroad controls the right-of-way. We need to get a line under, and so we're recommending you authorize the city manager to sign that agreement.
Okay, thank you. I'll make the motion to move to approve the contract, but the city does not waive its immunity provided under the Governmental Tort Liability Act. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven H, consider authorizing the city manager entering into agreement to retain Hall and Associates for advice on the repair fees for Center Hill Dam. Mr. Kelly?
Mayor and council, here requesting council authorization for the city manager to enter into an agreement to retain Hall and Associates to advise our department on dam repair fees attributed to the repair of Center Hill Dam. The return, the, the terms of the agreement are on an hourly rate, and they're at a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000. We've used Hall and Associates before in prior negotiations on different issues in our department, and would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Motion of second. Anyone like to speak to the motion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven I, receive the city's financials for July 1, 2015 through January 31, 2016.
Mayor and council, the financials I have for you tonight cover the period July 1st through January 31, 2016. I do have lots of slides, so I'll keep my comments brief. But if you do have questions, please stop me and ask. The first fund that we'll look at is the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the city. Total revenue for the period January 31st is $14,556,000. That is about 58% of our budget and is exactly where we need to be at January 31st. If you look there, property taxes and business taxes are a little bit lower than some of the other ones, other line items, but that is as expected as of January because those items are due later on. Fifty, actually 50% of the property taxes collected in one month, the month of February. So, and business tax also is a timing difference that, the bulk of that usually comes in in April and May. So, that's not unexpected, and that's right where we need to be at January 31st. Moving on to expenditures, our total operating expenditures through January 31st are at $13,706,000, and that's at 55% of our budget. Nothing unexpected there. And our capital expenditures, we're at 43% of our budget there, at $379,564. So, total expenditures, we're at 55% of budget, which is nothing unexpected and where we, we plan to be at January 31st. State Street A, total revenue there is $514,000, but it's only 29% of budget, and expenditures there are also only 18% of budget. That's because in this fund, we budgeted for that huge sidewalk grant and sidewalk project that we're going to be doing, and that really hasn't gotten started yet. It's still in the very early stages. But if you look there, the other revenue, gas tax goes into there, and other revenue is about where we expect. Nothing unusual there. And expenditures are paving, and Greg had mentioned our salt budget. We're about 51% of it, which is, is typical for January. Let's see. The solid waste fund, as of January 31st, the revenues there are $905,000, which is about 60% of budget, and our total expenditures there, $812,000, which is 53% of budget. Again, no concerns there, and that's, that's where we anticipate being at January 31st. But as I mentioned to you on Monday, this is one fund that we'll be bringing some discussions to you for budget work session, long-term, because there's not enough revenue going into this fund to sustain the replacement of capital over the, the long-term. So this is one fund that we will be talking about for the next fiscal year with, in budget work sessions. But for January 31st, we're, nothing unusual's happened and we're, where we expected to be. The drug fund, total revenue at January 31st is $48,775, is about 60% of their budget, and expenditures are at 7% of their budget at $5,482. They have some items budgeted in there that they have not yet purchased yet, but will be purchasing between now and the end of the year. Animal control fund. The new shelter's been opened up a year now. It was a year in January. So this budget was our best guess of what was, what operations were going to be like for the new year. And our total revenue through January 31st is $202,000, which is about 80% of the budget, and total expenditures are $138,000, which is 52% of the budget. So we're in pretty good shape there. Nothing unusual there, unexpected there. Most of the revenue for that comes from the local governments. The city has already put their money in. We received the allocation from the county, and Monterey, Allgood, and Baxter also contributes to that, too, so. The economic development fund, at January 31st, total revenues are at 95% of the budget, which is $4,989,000. That's not unexpected because a big chunk of that revenue is that Fast Track grant that you guys approved and we received back in the fall, and you can also see in expenditures that, grand expenditure then coming out. That was part of Project Victor, if you recall. So, that's why expenditures there are also at 97% of budget. Also accounted for in this fund, well, property taxes go into there. This fund receives 4% of the property taxes. But also accounted here was the Highlands Business Park project, and we're still, still had some construction that fell over from last fiscal year into this year, so. But again, nothing unexpected there or no concerns with this fund going forward, so. Quality of Life Fund. This fund also receives 1% of the property, 1 cent on the property taxes, and revenues at January 31st were $389,000, or 19% of the budget. This fund is used to account for a rail switchers project, which, as you know, is finally in the construction phase after many years of, of planning and moving forward on it. So, that's being accounted for in this fund. And as of And as of January 31, expenditures are $614,000 or 28% of the budget, so. Nothing expect, unexpected there and that fund is, is, doesn't have any concerns at this point. General obligation debt service is where we account for all of our debt. Total revenue at January 31 is at 64% of the budget at $2,183,000. And expenditures are only at 11% of the budget at $367,000. But if you look there, principal payments on the bonds are actually at zero and that's because those principal payments are actually due in May. So that's a timing difference. And principal payments on the notes usually come out in May too, so. Interest on the notes is lower than, only 10% of the budget because we actually budget our variable rate debt. We still have some variable rate debt. We budgeted at 5% and it's actually been coming in at less than 1%. So it's been around a quarter of a percent for the last, last couple of years, so. So we really don't have any concerns with that fund. Water quality control fund department, total revenues at January 31 are at 58% of the budget at $8,284,000. And on the next page, expenditures for that department are right on track too. Total operating expenditures are at 54.5% of the budget at $6,624,000. Total operating expenses including capital are at $8,612,000 or 46% of the budget. So nothing unexpected there and no concerns with that fund either. Electric department, at January 31, total revenues are at 54% of budget, $30,940,000. And expenditures are also at 54% of budget at $32,599,000. And gas department, revenues at the gas department are at 32% of budget or $3,636,000. That's typical for the gas department. Their revenue usually comes in in the winter months. So the revenue is a little bit lower compared to budget at this time. And their expenditures are at 50% of the budget at $5,783,960. Have no concerns or anything with this fund, but we do anticipate coming in a little bit lower than revenue because the winter has not been as cold as previous winters. But no concerns on where we're going to end up. It just might be a little bit lower, which that happens over, over time. One year we might be up a little bit, one more, you know, you never, never can predict the weather. But this winter has been a little bit warmer than, than previous winters, so. Employee insurance fund, total revenue at January 31 is at 58% of the budget at $2,606,000. And expenditures are at 62% of the budget at $3,167,000. And if you recall, this is a fund that we had concerns about before and we've talked to you about before. But we just recently approved, or you approved some changes to premiums and out-of-pocket charges. And those kicked in January 1 because our plan year for our employees runs January 1 through December 31. So those changes just kicked in January 31. So everybody's deductibles and out-of-pocket reset to zero. So with those increases in premiums and those changes to the plan design, we're hoping down to slow down the increase in the claims that we've had over the last year and a half, so. General improvement bond fund, this is my last fund. This is the fund where we account for all of our big, large projects that are going on that are being financed by bond issues. And total revenue is $10 million at 70% of the budget. And you can see there, the proceeds from the bond that we just sold this past fall are represented there. And then the projects that we have going on that are being funded by our bond issues. The Dogwood Park Phase 3, that's coming out of the 2013 bond issue. What projects we have left there. And then the Bennett Road is a project that's going to be coming out of the new bond issue. And then the animal shelter where you guys recently approved lately, building some walls, some sound barrier walls out there. And that'll be coming out of there. But at January 31, those expenditures totaled $2,328,000 or 16% of budget. That's all I have. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. It's very nice to see, we're, we're very blessed to be in a very sound financial position. I commend their, you and our city manager and all of our department heads for a very, very good operations of our departments and to remain within our budgets and actually ahead in most of them. So that's very good. Any of the rest of the council have any comments? Yes, sir.
Just a couple of quick questions running again. I just echo what the mayor said because I heard consistently you said no surprises, no real concerns. And, but, but the question I have is back on the, the state street aid portion of the budget. The figure that I saw was a million for the sidewalks, a million three. Does that include the 800,000 that we received from the state for our new sidewalk project?
Where do you see a million three?
State Street Aid, State Street Aid.
Okay, yeah. Well, it's, the budget has, that grant has a match. So the grant that we're going to get is 950,000 is what the grant amount was. And then the expenditures are going to be more than that. We actually budgeted expenditures of $1,146,000.
So at my understanding with the grant, the last numbers I heard was the grant was, the state, we were going to get about $800,000 from the state and we're going to spend about $200,000 on those sidewalks. Is that, have those numbers changed? And my question was, did that million three reflect the monies that we expect from the state or have already received from the state for that, for the sidewalk project? Or am I just?
Well, okay, the million three you're looking at is the available funds.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking at there? Let me get back to the state street aid.
The grant's for a million. We got a billion in the grant.
Right, and, and, yeah.
That's not reflected. That you're asking me, is that million dollars reflected?
Is that reflected in these numbers?
Not yet.
It's not?
Because we haven't received it yet.
No, no.
Yeah.
No, that five, you see that where it says intergovernmental revenue? That budget amount, $1,007,000, actually includes that grant money. But we have not received any of it yet. That 503,000 that we have received is actually the gas tax that we receive from the state each month.
And the grant we got for sidewalks is a million. And we'll spend about $200,000 in addition to that, right? That's expected, okay, for, for the sidewalk project.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the estimated.
Right. And my. I know when the envision Cookeville process, new sidewalks was a very popular item, a lot of interest in it. And this grant comes along at a very timely time as it relates to, as it relates to interest in sidewalks. That was my question. Now, the last question I have is with regard to the insurance fund. You mentioned increase in premium and, and higher out-of-pocket. Was the increase in premium to employees based on the city paying less of a percentage of the total cost? How, how was that determined?
Well, the actual increase in the premium, I think, was just in the family premium.
All right.
And it went up $61 and the employee actually paid 14 of that. The city paid $47 of that increase.
And that was only, that's not individual, that's just family covering?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Brenda. Good job.
Any other comments? All right, that gets us to our, the end of our normal agenda portion of the meeting. At this time, is there any citizens that would like to speak to the council about any item not on the agenda? All right, council, any comments from the council? Yes, sir?
I'd like to announce that we, a week ago today, that we got a email from Healthier Tennessee that we received a $5,000 grant to apply to doing healthy things in Cookeville such as physical activity, better nutrition and tobacco, anti-tobacco and tobacco abstinence. So we had a preliminary meeting here on Wednesday and we talked about ways to spend the $5,000 and we figured about $10,000 worth of things to do. So we've got to cut that back a little bit. But the nice news is we're getting a $5,000 grant from the state to apply to our Healthier Tennessee and Cookeville. So that's a nice problem.
I'll just commend Dr. Walmack for his leadership in this effort. I know he ran around making sure that we got everybody signed up that needed to get, set, signed up so that the, the grant would come through. So appreciate you doing that. Other council? All right, we will be adjourned.